And half of them built castles with no cards with the kids. And the other half went and did jousting. Cone set up with a ball on it and they were riding pool noodles with a noodle. And, and we actually, I was like, come on, let's go guys, get in there and do it. And to see some of the kids doing that with them, they thought it was hilarious. And the kids had a great time doing it. Um, last week we were just here at TMS and we were spread out among several different classrooms, working with teachers in different subjects. We actually had some one-on-one guidance as well with some of these students as well to kind of help them get a good example of what we are looking for when we talk about Tiffin Proud. And then obviously this week we're going to be going to Crowe. So in total, we've averaged roughly around about 10 hours of community service already this year. And every week of the month, we will be traveling to a different school and doing some of those things. And I know that when Christmas time, we'll be heading back over to Lincoln with the little ones to make ornaments in the morning and in the evening afternoon session. That way we're getting both of those students going. Uh, along with those service hours, obviously we've been in charge of like the spirit, trying to build a spirit back up. And we were lucky enough that Mr. Alvarado granted us the ability to be in charge of pep rallies. And the very first one, we decided to take it to the outside stadium and do it. And it was a blast. The kids loved it. We had over 97 students actually participate. And the first one, that was one of the big things. I know Mr. Richards wanted to get more kids to get involved and stuff. So we got 97 kids that got involved where we had them doing a water balloon relay toss. Um, and then into, we had a three-legged race and then into a pie eating contest. And then once they finished the pie, they had to run through a banner that said tornado pride, we don't stop as our mantra. And the kids absolutely loved it. Um, and then it's crazy because I was talking to some of the seniors, because we did another one right after Clash of the Classes. Um, we did pumpkin bowling, apple cider, bottle flip, chug. And then we bobbed for apples as well. So the kids really enjoyed that. We just had another one to honor all of our fall athletes in the sports. We had a, we had a great fall season with a lot of our, um, our athletes in sports. And we wanted to, you know, announce those individuals and those teams and give good luck to our cross-country teams that competed. And obviously our girls brought home a district title for the first time since the nineties. So it's phenomenal work that they're doing. Um, but we really talked to them and they said that this is the third one that we've had this year. And before they were even going into this year, they've only ever had one pep rally. So what we realized was that we were trying, training the students again on like what a pep rally looks like, how, what do we do? Um, and all the other things, intricacies of it. So it's been a kind of a evolving door and we're hoping to continue to do that throughout the winter and obviously in the spring to honor all of our athletes and then our clubs and our sports and things like that. Um, along with that, we decorated the hallways. We actually worked in the paper for that during, um, our homecoming week. We have banners put up around the school to honor our classes, freshmen, sophomore, juniors and seniors. Um, and, um, obviously we've hung banners for different games that give support to our, our programs. Um, now we are in the process and we have been here for probably a month now. We are grant writing. This is something that we kind of talked with, uh, Mr. Monsor about. He's part of the Tiffin Charitable Foundation. And, um, he talked about there was an ability for grants out there. And, um, talked with several of my students and they liked the idea of doing it. Now we're broken up into four separate groups. We have a welcoming committee, an engagement committee, a spirit committee, and a, and a service learning committee. And each of these groups, um, did some research and different things and what they wanted to do for a grant, um, through the charitable foundation. And we're going to be presenting that with, to Mr. Rich's very soon. Um, but just to give you a little bit about it, um, they're working right now on getting all the documents and everything situated. They've got their brochures ready. Um, they've been working, working on their pitches. Ms. Geiger came in and really helped us. Ms. Vogt's been phenomenal in this process as well with our students. So I have to give them a lot of credit for helping us. Um, but we're, we're looking at getting some new banners in our gym and updating them. Um, what's that? Yeah, why don't you talk here? I'm getting a little winded here.
Hi, I'm Mrs. Luthar. Um, I've been watching these kids for the past several weeks create these grants. And if you've ever written a grant, you know that it is not an easy task. Um, and the, these students have been working well together. They have been even creating Google forums and gathering feedback from current students and using the data to really drive their grant writing. Um, one of the focuses is like, um, renovating the front hall to make like a lobby area for like, the students could sign up for like a study table or use to eat during lunch. Um, along with that, there's another group that wants to invest in a inflatable tunnel to like travel around the district for different events. They want to get some updated banners in the gymnasium to reflect the current school colors. And they also have thought about a statue in front of the high school. Um, if you've ever been to Heidelberg and seen the Big H or, um, out front, that is what kind of they're looking for. And the final one was the, um, uh, that all four? Yeah, that was all four. But, um, just watching these kids work on this and generate the data and even they, uh, we went to my room a couple of days and some groups practiced their pitches with me and we gave them feedback. Mrs. Vogt and I, um, have been watching their practice pitches and she's been a great help, like Mr. Otney has said. And so yeah, their brochures are coming along and they are well on their way to submitting this. So I hope that it goes well. And so far from my viewpoint, it has been. Um, also seeing them work out in the community has been just a joy, just to watch how, um, they can really brighten up a young student's life in Tiffin City Schools. And also credit to all the elementary and middle school teachers for like welcoming us and like having us work with them as well. Um, it's been a lot of open communication and worked out really well. So, so far it's been great.
Yep. So just, uh, just, uh, thank you guys very much for allowing us the opportunity to have this class and, uh, have these students be able to branch out in a different, uh, a different area that maybe some were not comfortable with. Um, but they definitely have grown and I know that we're extremely proud of the growth that we've seen over this year so far. And we're looking forward to another great quarter coming up. And, uh, and in December, we have to have it submitted by December. So, um, we'll be looking forward and hopefully we'll be back at this December, January to celebrate and have, uh, the four grants go through and brighten up Tiffin City Schools. So thank you guys so much.
Thank you.
Mr. Otney, just really fast, Mrs. Luthar. Um, and I think I'm pretty, I'm pretty positive, I know the answer. But how did we settle? You guys did a, there were a whole bunch of choices of what types of courses that we, we talked about offering or that you guys talked about offering at the high school. How did you guys land on leadership, on the leadership class?
Well, like I said before, I was probably the biggest proponent of it. I pushed it extremely hard. And then as a history department, we actually sent out a survey and we had the students actually sign and put rank basically where they wanted. And leadership was one of the top ones that came back. And, um, it was originally just supposed to be one class, but then when we saw the huge list, I needed a little bit of extra help in the classroom. And I tapped somebody I've worked with for now 10 years and is a phenomenal person and a great leader and a Tiffin Columbian graduate as well. And I thought that would be great for us when we're trying to get this culture and climate back in line. And, and obviously she's been phenomenal for our class as well.
Is this a semester class?
This, this is a whole year class. They're going to get two credits. So it's two periods, because they could have taken another, another class in different. So we made it where it's two, two periods where they get two credit, full credits for this. So.
I really like the, the concept and the connecting from elementary through high school. I think that's fantastic.
And the first semester is like developing yourself as a leader. And then the second semester is focusing on the art of creating a culture and like pushing those skills onto others as well.
And I'd like to thank both of you as well. Uh, too often we, we hear about some students that make not great choices. Um, and, and sometimes school districts, it's easy to be identified by those kids that maybe don't make the best of choices on a regular basis. But I think what you guys have been able to do is you've been able to highlight the fact that yet again, I'm going to go with basically the concept of we have a waiting list for the class, uh, that we have so many kids that like helping out at the elementaries, like going out in the community to help. And I think that's a great way for Tiffin City Schools to be known as well, that we have so many kids, uh, that, that want to help and want to be a positive, a positive light for other people. And so thank you for you guys for doing that as well and leading that charge in that initiative.
And volunteerism in a community is so important. I see that class as actually a class to teach how to volunteer. And that's, that's a lifelong skill.
So the, thank you both for, for all that you've put into this. And now I'm curious, so students, there's, there's a, a waiting list to get in it. Is it just seniors or is it all grades?
It is juniors and seniors because it's elective. We wanted to give them a chance to get as many of their classes done. What we're, what we've found out and what we've seen while we added so many more electives was there just wasn't as many options available. So we wanted to offer more opportunities for them to be able to stay in Tiffin High School, Tiffin Columbian High School. And this is one of them that allows them to gain obviously two credits, but another elective and a skill that honestly, if you put it on a resume and someone sees a leadership class, and we're at the point right now, we're working to get NCAA clearinghouse approved for the class as well. So we're getting all that stuff done. That way it's just going to be another great resume builder for our students when they try to go to the next, when they go to the next level in whatever it is that they're doing.
For those who are juniors and are in it, can they take it again their senior year?
Uh, so that's a great question. And I think we're going to talk about if there's going to be an opportunity for a leadership one and leadership two. So I, I, that's a conversation that I think we're going to be having here probably after the first of the year with Mr. Alvarado and the counselors and kind of see which route they want to go with that.
Like an advanced leadership where then they can be teaching it as well.
There, there's that other aspect of it too, allowing them to come in. And I know we talked about that going into next year, when we have the welcome back to school for the, whether it was the freshmen or for the younger kids, having them, knowing who our list and clientele is, talking to them before they leave for the summer and then tasking them to be separated at this different areas. So when these kids are coming in, they're giving high fives, they're there to welcome people back. Um, and hopefully we have an inflatable tunnel that look really, really, really nice for people to walk through and everything. And obviously we want to have, uh, that, that great statue in front. So it becomes a great opportunity for alumni and people when they drive by and they're like, that's Tiffin Columbian High School.
So, uh, thanks very much, both of you guys. That was really fabulous work. Uh, if I might just say, this is, um, this reminds me of something that we tried to propose with the business advisory a number of years ago and in regards to a, a junior achievement program that was presented at, at the capital conference a number of years ago, in which you had juniors and seniors in high school go down to the elementary school and, and show leadership. And because, you know, you're training these kids up to go and, and make presentations. And that is so valuable. I mean, if you look at what, how little experience people get in the undergraduate programs, they come out with a degree, but they got very little experience in terms of organizing, leading and, and taking initiative. And that's a probably a better, that probably could be one of the most valuable classes that kids will ever have in high school. Because there's so much of that that's in these, in demand out in the real world. Yeah. So great, good, that very good job.
The, uh, the pep rally comment is kind of funny, right? Um, watching TV shows and movies with the kids and they, they see the pep rallies, which are humorous to some degree, but they say, what's that? Right? They, they do not know what pep rallies are. So, you know, I like, I like that, that we're bringing that back a little bit. But the, the different aspects of leadership, I, I can hear you, um, being excited about, right? Sometimes it's about going and sitting with, with a, a kid and painting a pumpkin, right? And just being a positive influence and, and that, that's leadership, right? Writing grants and doing paperwork, right? Sometimes that's leadership too, right? And there, there's different aspects to it, right? We're, we're elected leaders, right? We've, we've hired a superintendent as a designated leader, but there's, there's a lot of different types of leadership. And I, I can hear you describing those in, in their experiences. So I, I think that's, that's fantastic.
Does, does any of this count towards any of their seals?
There, there is a leadership seal, which is where Ms., Dr. McBride was referring to, that would be then a leadership. It's one and two, there'd be two years of it.
There's a community service seal as well. So their hours can contribute to that as well.
The county has a leadership program as well, but it usually culminates with a project at the end of the year. Do you foresee something like that or?
I think that we're, we're working that way. We wanted to kind of see how this grant process goes. And then I think then we would love to be able to kind of put it into like a, either a project or presentation to kind of show the entire process of how it went to be. Um, so then, well, as, as long as we were able to keep our fingers crossed, get the grant, um, and have the students come here and actually present and show you guys the entire process of what they went through. Um, and I think that would be very big because speaking in front of people is a very big leadership quality that you have to have. And some of them, I, I think would, would, would be a little nervous, but I think it's part of the process of trying to develop them in different leadership roles. But yes, there'll be some type of a culmination of a final project, um, when they walk out at the end of the school year.
Thank you all so much. And please send our, our warm regards and congratulations back to your students when you see them tomorrow.
And we do put stuff on, on Twitter or they call it X. I tag Tiffin City Schools a lot for when we go out into the public so that, that the community can see what these students are doing, all the wonderful things that they're being a part of. So we'll continue to do that as well.
So much.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right. So our, our next piece, um, we are going to have Mr. Cook, uh, go over some finances. Uh, there is, um, some pieces later in the agenda where these pieces will be pertinent, but we wanted to go ahead and get those going currently. So I'll turn it over to Mr. Cook. Um, while he's working on this technical piece, I do want to share that as we are discussing finances more and more, we're hoping to have more visual representations just as another means of getting information out there. So look towards seeing this more frequently as we move forward.
No, that's it. Maybe. Sorry. We'll make it work either way, Tim. Yeah, if you just want to scroll, we'll make it work. It's all good. If you can go down to that ORCO AC requirements. So I want to spend a little bit of time talking about our five-year forecast. I know it's a fun topic. We have a great turnout tonight for school finance. Um, it's everybody's favorite thing to do in schools. Um, I have to provide the Board of Education a five-year forecast twice a year by November 30th and update it by May 31st of each year. Uh, the forecast has to include all of our general funds, anything with a special cost center that might be designated, like we talked about earlier with PI, et cetera. Emergency levy funds, which is our fund 016, and any debt service activity that would otherwise have gone to the general fund. We're not doing that right now. Tim, if you can hit the next one. Purposes and objectives of the forecast. It's to engage the Board of Education and the community in long-range planning. And I think that's key. In discussions of financial issues that are facing our district, obviously we've had discussions. We know we have some challenges and the forecast will highlight that. It also serves as a basis for determining the school district's ability to sign the certificate required by ORC 5705412, in my world, which we commonly call the 412 certificate. It also provides the Ohio Department of Education, or DU, and the Auditor of State a way to identify school districts with potential financial problems. As we see at the end of our forecast and fiscal year 28, we're actually negative on our cash balance. So that would be an early indication to them that we need to begin to take a look at things. Before we get into the numbers, uh, financial forecast is a painting of the future based upon what I really know today. Decisions we've made, data I've looked at in the past. And I know I'm early here in my tenure in the district, but the numbers aren't that materially different from what Sharon had. And a lot has changed even since this summer. The five-year forecast is viewed as a key management tool and it should be updated periodically. I know when Ben and I meet, we talk about this all the time. It, it really drives not only the board level decisions, but then day-to-day, the management level as well. In a forecast, the numbers only tell a small part of the story. Uh, for the forecast itself to be meaningful, you need to review and consider the notes and assumptions. Uh, we'll have that online. I gave a copy of that to the Board of Education tonight. That really goes into the nuts and bolts and the detail, the why behind those numbers to really paint that picture. The five-year encourages the district management teams to examine future years' projections and identify when challenges will arise. I think it's fair to say we have some challenges. We're in deficit spending, but those numbers, if we don't take action, continue to get worse. This in turn helps district management to be proactive in meeting those challenges. Key line items of our five-year. It's divided into two sections, revenue and expenditures. The district's revenue is made up of two main sources, local and state funding. And expenditures are primarily salary, wages, benefits, purchase services, and supplies and materials. Major assumptions to our forecast. Property tax values are estimated to increase for Class 1 by 12%. Tax year 23, which is collected, collected in 2024. Now, I know we got some information late on Friday. This is very much in flux at this point, uh, due to legislation in Columbus that's pending, House Bill 187. It, House Bill 187 is intended to lower our reappraisal growth. Uh, both bills are pending. I would not be surprised to see them pass. I think there's this public outcry with reappraisals that are out there, tax bills are going up, valuations are skyrocketing. So much like the state did back in the seventies with House Bill 920, House Bill 187 is their answer. Um, our county auditor reached out to all of the local taxing entities late Friday afternoon and explained that due to House Bill 187, if it passes, there's a strong likelihood it could be May before we would receive our settlement versus February. I think there's a real high likelihood there could be a combined first and second half settlement next August, potentially later. Um, right now they do it on that one-year snapshot and the state, if this passes, is wanting them to use a three-year average. None of the counties have three years worth of data. Um, so they have to bring in the reappraisal firms again to recalculate for three years. There's 41 counties that are currently going through this. Uh, my understanding is there's only a handful of vendors that actually do this technical work. So there's a little bit of a scramble right now as to how and when they're going to even get this done. Even though we have deficit spending forecast in our forecast, we do have a positive cash balance. So we'll be able to weather the storm. It's just our numbers are going to look radically different depending on the timing of settlements when they arrive. Uh, we will be at the 20 mil floor, Class 1 residential ag after tax year 23 reappraisal. We should be there by tax year 26. Again, I'm going to put a big asterisk by that one. The 20 mil floor has always been something districts use strategically in the past to try to get some growth. There's legislation being discussed. There's a committee actively being formed in Columbus to make changes to the 20 mil floor. Nobody knows what that means at this point. It could become a 10 mil floor. So again, 50% of our revenue is local, which we'll see 50% is coming from the state and they're monkeying around with that component which funds half of our budget. We just have some severe uncertainty there. House Bill 33, which is the state budget, has us on the foundation funding formula. Fluctuations in enrollment and value such as poverty levels, tax rates in our community, which are being talked about with 187, are going to impact what our overall funding is. So there's just a lot of moving components this time around. House Bill 33 is funded for fiscal year 24 and 25, but not beyond fiscal year 26. So I flat funded 26 through 28. Revenue growth over the five years is estimated to be a little less than 1% and expenditure growth is nearly 4%. Hit that up, Tim. So as you can see, this looks a little bit different on Google Slides than PowerPoint. Um, that circle at the top, revenue expenditures, uh, crossed deficit spending in fiscal year 23, which was last year. We have a cash deficit projected by FY '28. Uh, we're going to have to do something to increase our revenue. We can't just rely on the state. And we'll talk a little bit more about that here later on. Tim, if you could scroll down. Revenue versus expenditures. Uh, cash balance remains positive through FY '27. Our ending cash balance stays above 30-day reserves through Our ending cash balance stays above 30-day reserves through FY '26. I know we spoke about that earlier as we begin to work on a cash balance policy. What's appropriate? I would say no less than 30 days, no more than 90 is a target. A 30-day cash balance policy would give us about a $2.7 million balance in the bank based on today.
What happens if it falls below that?
Nothing. We violate our policy. We still have money in the bank. It's a threshold. It's a target for us to make business decisions around to try to prevent that from happening. So as we would near that, then that would trigger discussions on potential increases in revenue, which is taxes. Look at decreasing our expenditures through personnel, supplies, materials, so forth. It's more or less a guideline to help keep us on a path where we can avoid that negative cash balance down the road, a planning tool. Expenses started to exceed revenue in FY '23. If you'll go on up, Tim. Got a little bit ahead of myself. 30- to 60-day cash balance is a responsible target to end our fiscal year. We're not allowed to have anything less than zero, which we begin to cross as you look out there in fiscal year '28. What happens at that point is I can't sign any long-term contracts. I can't sign the 412 certificate. If I do, it's a $10,000 violation personally for me. So we have to be mindful of that balance and we'll true things up as we move through this. Estimated general fund revenue sources, it didn't come out on this on the pie graph, but approximately 50.8% of our revenue comes from the state, 49.2 locally. It's about as evenly split as you can get. So I always like to see, say, when I see this slide, half our revenue comes from the state. If they catch a cold in Columbus, we get sick. That's a big piece of the puzzle for us here locally. You look at all the yield curves that are out there. What does that mean? Everybody's been saying we're due for recession for about the last six or seven years. It will happen. The question is when and how severe is that going to be? Yes?
Is that, is that historically a stable figure or has that changed over the years?
For us, it's been pretty close to that over the last three years that I've looked at. I'd have to go back further to see. I would not be surprised. That's been pretty typical within a couple percentage points.
And in terms of, could you just give me a rough estimate what the state average would be for schools our size percentage?
Percentage? Boy, I hesitate to even guess because it depends on a whole host of factors. Wealth, poverty levels, the Fair Funding Formula just kind of threw all that typical out the window and there's so many different components that go into it. Previously, at my other district, we were at about 70% state-funded, 30%. But you'll see it all over the map. Wealthier districts obviously going to be more local, less state. It's not so much driven by that ADM enrollment anymore.
So it's not, the state doesn't try to, you know, do they try to equalize it based upon what your locals providing? Is that?
Yeah, that's a component of it now. The Fair Funding Formula, it used to be you got X number of dollars per kid, $6,000. I think this year the figure is 8,200. And then there's a whole host of components, your property tax valuations, your federal poverty goes into that. There's about seven different components that help you arrive then at that formula which we're on.
Thanks.
House Bill 33 and tax year reappraisal are going to provide us some growth in FY '24 and '25. State revenue, we've got flattening out depending on the new Bynion budgets. We just don't know yet. And then again, Friday's a little wrinkle into all of this and pending with House Bill 187 is a little bit of a game changer right now. So just a lot of uncertainty with that. Challenges to our revenue. Essentially, revenues are not keeping pace with expenses. House Bill 33 has us on the funding formula and provides some increases in FY '24 and '25. There's no information about state revenue FY '26 through '28 as there's two new budgets in that period. Property values are going to grow in tax year '23 with our reappraisal, but House Bill 920 limits our growth just to that inside millage. And I would like to note here, I think it's very interesting to me as I look at this. House Bill 920 was passed back in the 70s in almost a similar situation, rising inflation, housing values were going up and the state stepped in with what they thought was the fix at the time for this, much like we're seeing today with House Bill 187. So it's an interesting comparison and we don't yet know what are the long-term impacts of that as it plays out. Our total revenue is estimated to grow less than 1% annually over the next five years, while expenses are estimated to grow by 4% a year. Expenses growing four times faster than revenue is just not a viable situation in the long run. It's just not sustainable.
So just for clarity, because even though property values are reappraised, the levy, the mills change then, don't they?
Yeah.
The mills change basically. So the only way you grow property or property tax value is new construction?
That's correct.
Yeah.
That's correct. Yep. House Bill 920 really handcuffs us on what we can see as far as growth goes. And that's why districts are continually coming back every three to four years on the ballot for revenue. And I think it's fair to note, it's been over a decade for us, 12 years.
Right. And I think, I think that's something, I think we just got to hammer that home to the public that we are at net zero or negative growth because we're getting less money as inflation affects property tax values and as our growth is stagnant or we're giving up abatements, then, you know, for the new construction that's been taking place.
You can make an argument with inflation, our revenue's actually gone backwards.
Exactly, yeah.
And we have not been out to the public with any additional assistance.
That's my point. We have to be, make it clear that we either got to go back levy, levy, levy or find, you know, assistance in growing, you know, new construction.
Correct.
Inside our district.
And I think this is, this is a tool. We'll get to a couple slides in a minute that Tim wasn't sure we should be in here, but I think it'll make sense. We have to really use this to plan for that future. We can't continue to wait 12 years and then what if is going to happen down the road. I think we really need to try to load balance. 1% revenue growth with 4% expense growth, it's just not sustainable in the long run. Not a lot of positive news about revenue growth. I know the community's not going to like to hear that, but at the same time, the only thing we have to go out and do that is an increase in taxes. So I think there's some conversations we've begun to have on that. But again, we have to educate students and we recognize the importance of what that revenue does to our district. District's going to need to look at budget cuts, new revenue, or a combination of both in the long run. And again, I think it's in the early stages of that. We're beginning to plan and have those work sessions like we did tonight before our meeting so that we can take a look at what options do we have in front of us. General fund expenditures, wages and benefits, they're estimated to be just under 73%, which I think is actually really good. Most districts, kind of as I came up through the treasurer world, they didn't, you didn't mash the gas pedal down and redline that engine until you were at 80, 85%. While we're at 2/3 of our, well, 3/4 of our budget at salaries and benefits, it's really pretty good. A lot of districts out there would kill to have 73% of their salaries and benefits for their budget. So we've been efficient and we know that. We've talked about that story. It's just another data point to help with that. Purchase services is our second highest cost. Obviously, we have a lot of support for students. College Credit Plus, utilities, trash pickup, ESC contracts. Those are just some of the items that go into that line. So it's expensive to run a district and those supports aren't cheap. General fund expenditures by object, this doesn't do it any justice outside of PowerPoint, but the long story short is the blue and the red line are our salaries and benefits. And you can see that's the largest component of our budget on the expense line, which is to be expected. We're in the people business. Costs are growing faster than inflation and our revenue, again, constant theme.
So, Mr. Cook, this has some assumed growth in wages built into it?
Yeah, I've got our union agreements this year at 4, 2 and 1/4 next, and then 1 and 1/2% going forward.
Okay, thank you.
When you have that, do you include any purchase services under salaries, wages? When we purchase services through the ESC, does that factor into our?
That's on the purchase service line, a 400 object. That's not actually a salary since it's not directly paid by us.
So basically, in a sense, we can divert that away from our salaries.
Salary and benefit line, correct. This shows up on the 400 line.
Yeah.
Yep, which is a purchase service.
That'd be the, that'd be the green bar here?
Yes. Yes. If we were to bring those services in-house and put them on our payroll, that 72.7% would increase.
Be up to that 80-something like you were saying?
It would be close, yes.
Okay.
So you mentioned we're at 73-ish percent wages and benefits and that's low relative to other districts. What about purchase services? Are we high relative to other districts?
I haven't spent a lot of time diving into others. Ours seems high. Ours is high. It's not common to see that percentage in purchase services. I can't say if that's a good or a bad thing. I know our ESC contract's high. City districts typically have high purchase services. There's a lot of supports that are needed. So it's not necessarily uncommon for a city district segment, but it is high relatively.
Mr. Cook?
Yes, sir.
What are you seeing in terms of health insurance? Because that's been one of our big costs in terms of benefits. Is that starting to, like, is it settling where like a 10% or something or?
I'm optimistic on that front. We have a ton of work to do with it. Our plan's not competitive. I've not shied away from that. We've had those conversations with staff. Did some conversations this weekend looking at some options on that. We're in a consortium. We have to give a year's notice to exit the right to leave. However, I think there's some creativity we can do with perhaps some other companies to maybe offer an attractive benefit, but I'm not that far down. Our trend's about 9 and 1/2% and that's, that's what I factored in there. I don't see the 15%. I talked to our broker last week. We have a couple of large claims out there, so we'll wait and see what those come in at. Go ahead and scroll up. True day ending cash balance. Here again, I know we had this discussion earlier. Ending cash balance, we're above the 60-day level through FY '26 and then we just fall off a cliff. So even though we have, that's where some discussions on that cash balance policy because I think it can have a tendency to say, well, we're okay. We're in compliance with that policy. But then what's the trend? I don't want that policy, everyone to say, oh, we're okay. We have this in the bank. What's the plan? Because it can mislead as well with that. So there's some work to do in that area. In conclusion, new state budget, House Bill 33, it's not providing any new money for FY '24, '25, but we don't have any information about '26 through '28. Our current funding model has us on the formula, so enrollment numbers are, I'm going to say, critical to maintaining our funding. Estor funds are going to be gone after this fiscal year. We've had some preliminary talks on maximizing those. So those costs are going to be moved back to the general fund. Right now, we've got just under 900,000 in salaries that are going to come back. That's forecast in here. Future funding's uncertain still for '26 through '28 as the Fair School Funding Plan is not funded beyond next fiscal year. Makes it perilous to predict what funding will be. I believe the state will stick with that, but even as late as last spring, there were discussions on completely scrapping that overhaul. So we'll see. House Bill 920 stops significant growth on our local taxes unless we can manage to get to the 20-mil floor, if it's still in place after House Bill 97 and Senate Bill 153, both of which have some pretty big implications on that tax base. Plans for new revenue and/or reduction should begin in 2024 so a plan can be developed to help avoid upcoming deficits. All right, Tim's like, why did I put this in here? So I think as you look at the five-year forecast, put the numbers aside, put everything aside. I always like to look at it in terms of a hurricane model. We know there's a storm brewing. When we look at those deficits, I think we would all agree that's not good. We don't want to wait. This is the start of Hurricane Irma back in, I believe, '17. People picked it up on radar, but we don't know how severe it's going to get as it gets towards our district. So how do we use this as a tool? It should be to plan. Those numbers are going to change. I thought I had a pretty solid forecast until about 4:30 on Friday. Then I started second guessing myself on that local revenue. So as you look at this storm and you think about that East Coast, the school districts, I have the advantage of knowing the next slide, we'll say we're Florida. If we don't do anything, we know that storm's coming. And as we get closer and closer, each one of those fiscal years that's bad moves up and that storm's just going to wreck our educational programs. So again, I think this is a tool to help us plan. I can't sit here and tell you those numbers are exact because I know they're not. There's a lot of moving pieces. You're going to hire some staff over the coming months that are going to change those figures. But we have to use this to plan. The storm's coming. We know that. The question is, how do we prepare for it? And I think as a board, we're doing that now. We're having those conversations. We're spending time before meetings to get policies in place. Take a look at how do we adequately plan to work with our community to get the messaging out. It's no shock. We are deficit spending. As you look at this forecast, there's a lot of red ink on there. It's expensive to educate kids. We know that. And I think it's important for the community to know if they value that. We're coming to them with an ask. We haven't determined how much or what that's going to look like, but to continue to propel us forward as a district, we're going to need additional revenue. That's it. Any questions?
I'll simply reiterate, it's no different than last year when I, we kind of did a state of the district presentation. Out of the 600 and some districts in the state of Ohio, there are 16 of them that have a lower expenditure per pupil than Tiffin City Schools. That puts us in the bottom 3% as far as expenditure per pupil. And I very much appreciate, as a whole, the board saying that's not a statistic that we should actually be proud of. That's, when we say we have, our value added is in the top third in the state of Ohio. Our performance index is still above the top 50%. We want to improve upon that, obviously, but we keep working on that. But at some point in time, money is necessary to help move those objectives forward. It is not true, it would not be true, you will never get me to say, spending more guarantees student performance. That's not true. However, with where we are and when you look at the data, spending at least a little bit more most certainly doesn't hurt a lot in those cases. So we are already pretty lean. So when Mr. Cook says, you know, we need to look at it through increased tax revenue or budget cuts or combination of both, the reality is we're already pretty lean as a district. So that just, that paints us into a bit of a corner then. I believe a number of years ago, almost a decade ago, we made some fairly substantial cuts in the district. And when I talked to staff members and parents and various other people, they said, we continue to feel that. We made those decisions over a decade ago and I'm not faulting anybody that made those decisions. You know, it's what they thought was best at the time. But we continue to see the after effect of that. So I think having these financial conversations is important. I will also, as a former history major, say that House Bill 920, when it was passed in 1976, it really wasn't viewed as a big deal. The legislators believed, and at the time, it kind of rightfully so, I get where they were coming from is we just don't want it to be taxation without representation. So this is not a big deal. Schools, you're just going to have to go back to your communities every so often and have them vote to give you more money. And truly, you can go back and read quotes from the day, the legislators didn't think that would be a big deal. You know, communities are going to support schools. That's going to be the way it works. So, but now they would have to vote to do it instead of it coming through an unvoted means. So House Bill 920, I know some people even in my position want to, want to kind of bash the legislature. They really didn't do anything at the time. It wasn't done to hurt schools.
So, Mr. Cook, you said with the new legislation that we don't necessarily know where it's going to head or the impacts of it. Do we know the longitudinal impacts of 920? Like it happened in the 70s. So have we been able to, has anybody looked backwards and seen the impact of that?
Howard Fleeder, Education Tax Policy Institute, whatever, yes, he has. He's done tremendous work on that. It's been devastating. That's why districts are on the ballot every three or four years because they don't get that growth. And really, to Mr. Richards' point, that's what scares me about House Bill 187. I recognize why they want to do this now. But to his point, 920 was implemented in almost the same economic environment, very benign. What does this three-year average do in the long run? What does it do when we see a one- or two-year drop in property values? I realize it's been straight up the last couple of years, but economically, that'll balance out. I'll put in a plug as well. Contact your legislatures. This isn't a done deal yet. It's got a ton of momentum for obvious reasons. Nobody likes to pay more in taxes and I recognize that. But it's also going to tie up 50% of our 50% or a quarter of our budget for the year. That's lost interest income. Rates are finally back up to where we're making an okay interest sum and we may not see that settlement until next fall. So again, reach out to your legislatures, have those conversations as they present and just weigh in from that local perspective. They need to hear that. They say they want to hear it. So I would encourage you to do that.
So when you mentioned revenues, just because there's people listening, right? We don't have a revenue generating product, right? We generate some gate receipts. You mentioned some interest-bearing investments that we haven't, but by and large, we are not a revenue generating product or we don't have a revenue generating product. So our one lever to pull is taxes.
Taxes.
one lever to pull is taxes. Some possibility for donations and grants. We just heard a presentation about some grants. Those tend to be very small, I think. But the one lever is taxes. So again, people are listening. What are the options for the taxes?
So we've got our traditional property taxes. Again, as I rewind that in my head, we want to get to that 20 mil floor so we can have growth. That really ties our hands right now to an emergency levy, which is a fixed sum, X number of dollars versus property valuation, and they'll adjust that. The other's going to be an income tax, earned income or unearned income. So there's not a whole lot of flexibility between those levers, if you will. It's taxes at the end of the day. And I think there is a good story here from those that have been here a while with that efficiency. Kudos to the board. Kudos to previous administration. 72.7% on salaries and benefits is good, even when you consider there are some that are outsourced through other entities. So there is some efficiency there, but our light bill's gone up, much like everybody at home. Our trash bill's gone up. The heating bill, the cooling bill, our food service cost, fuel bill. We fight those same pressures, but we don't have those additional revenue streams. So then we have to go back to the public. And I think that's where we, as a board, need to plan, so that we don't wait another decade, and the ask isn't quite as big. As we begin to implement these plans with permanent improvement, et cetera, we'll flatline some of those big bites that shock people. Over time, we'll do an improved job of planning and go back to the community when we have needs. And we may be able to go back to the community for permanent improvement funds versus general operating, et cetera.
I think that's the tie into some of the working sessions, right? Because we're not broadcasting the working sessions, right? So we're getting, we're getting better now at the separation between, I think, the operating expenses and the capital expenses. And really getting a handle on what we need in terms of both of those, and how we want to, again, get more revenue in each of those streams. And it may not be the same way we get additional revenue for each of those, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Is it fair to say, in reading what's been happening, that levies just seem to be more of a bigger legislative target at this point in terms of a revenue source, in terms of the rules now that we have to publish, how much it's going to be per 100,000, and we have, it's getting harder to pass them?
Yeah, I think the environment for K-12 education in general has just become very politicized. But yes, there's continual roadblocks that make it more difficult for us to go out and express those needs. And it makes it confusing for the public. It's no longer just a straightforward item, which I think leads to maybe voter confusion. It muddies the water when we go out with a message. Just makes it that much more confusing to people. Most people don't understand millage. I deal with this stuff, and to be frank, I have to stop and think about it. It doesn't just come second nature, even to me, when I'm swimming in it. So I can only imagine what my wife, who teaches, goes out, what does this mean? Yeah, yeah.
Plus, I think it's really, it gets confusing, because, let's face it, in the United States of America, education traditionally has been locally funded. And the farther the funding gets away from local, the more chaotic it gets and unpredictable. And so when we go out with a levy a couple of years ago, and then, because we really needed it, and then, maybe three years ago, three years ago, and it doesn't pass. But then, here we are, three years later, we still got money. They're saying, well, what were you doing then? Why didn't you levy that then? It was really urgent, and now you don't need it all. Well, because the feds gave us a lot of money. And so that screws you up. I say, oh, it's great, we got money from the feds. No, it's not, because it's borrowed money, but for one thing, and it's paid back by inflation, and here we are, confusing people by not needing money. And really, we do.
It is, yeah. In the big picture, you're right. It just drove that inflation bandwagon, but it also, that fiscal cliff we're all starting to talk about, because depending on how you use those funds, I guess it doesn't matter how you use them, they're gone in nine months or so. So it's a matter of us really maximizing what we have left to knock off some of those big capital expenses or items we know we're going to need in the next couple of years that are eligible. But yeah, all this money fell into the lapses of districts, and things look great. I mean, most five-year forecasts, if you go look at them, times were good, because we were offsetting expenses and moving things around, and now it's coming back, which we saw in ours with 800 and some thousand.
I tend to agree with Dr. Gase. We've got to take care of things locally. We can't depend on the federal government. Right now, we don't have a Congress that works for crying out. We can't count on the state legislature, because they're not even following the Constitution. Their voting districts have been told by Supreme Court that they're on Constitution. Well, we're going to use them anyway. They're supposed to, they're supposed to provide a common school. They've gone away from that. If we want Tiffin to be a great school district, then we have to do it locally. I don't think we can depend on anybody else.
Yeah, I don't disagree. I just got our first foundation settlement payment that was trued up from the July 1 budget. I mean, it's almost November. And then I have to give the board a five-year forecast that's supposed to be accurate, and oh, they're just truing up the budget. And by the way, House Bill 187's hitting. So it's, the more I go down and the longer I go in my career, it just becomes more and more and more and more difficult in this environment to forecast those operating needs, which are critical. I mean, heard from a couple of teachers tonight, that's the lifeblood of the district. And that financial piece drives what we can or can't do with them. So it's difficult. It's very difficult.
That's why their leadership class is so important, because leadership is lacking at all levels. So I think it's great that they've got that going.
Yep. Thank Larry to follow up on your leadership class. I think people forget that the purpose of public schools is to create citizens. That's one of our actual main functions, is to create citizens in the way that they're supposed to function. But Dr. Gase is correct. We've discussed this before, and I think that personally, and I'm not speaking for the whole board, at some point, I think locally, we're going to have to do something, income tax. It's something that can sustain us. And I know the board is really getting into discussions on this and planning. But, you know, we have to hear from the community, but we also have to responsibly start planning for something that could sustain us. And I think Dr. Gase is correct, that federal funding during COVID bought us time, but I think it could also give a false sense of hope or security that, yeah, but it bought us time to plan better. And so that's, we should take an opportunity to do it.
We'll make sure we get this out on the website, the PowerPoint, the forecast. And if the community out there has questions, get with Mr. Richards, myself. We'll be happy to answer those. But I appreciate your time.
I would even take what you said a little bit further. It's not at some point. It's, we're a year away, right? It's now, right? It's not a distant thing in the future, right? It's, we're in it at this point, right?
So I agree, yeah.
But I didn't want to speak for the entire board, but I think we've been seeing it, and the reality is that we got lucky, we got time. And I think the public has to understand that.
We're out of time.
We're out of time. We got two years reprieve, and we're out of time, and we need to do the responsible thing at some point. And as you said, Mr. Richards, I don't think the public understands, we did make cuts. That's why we have the school system that we have with the different buildings and the grades, separate banding. That was a fiscal decision. It wasn't made because this is the best thing, I think, for our students. And so we're there, but further cuts I don't think are going to be any good for our students. So.
If you want a nice, easy way to remember it, typically, it's a pretty simple. You either ask for money more frequently, but for smaller amounts, or you go for a longer period of time, but you have to ask for more. And so going back with, as Mr. Cook said, we've gone through, pretty much, kids, we had an entire group of kids that basically went kindergarten through senior year, and there was no new money for them during that entire time. So we are facing a bigger ask, and that's because we haven't been successful in the past for those, for the smaller asks. My guess is, whatever we did a few years ago is probably, I'm going to guess, it was significantly smaller than what we're going to be asking for moving forward.
But then you think about, okay, so how did we manage? Well, we managed by cheapening our product.
Yes.
Taking away raises for teachers.
Yes.
Taking away, you know, whatever kind of incentive pay we might have, taking away programs. So we've cheapened our product over the years, and so you become mediocre.
Yeah, I think it's fair to say on there. I talk about that balance, but those numbers, we can't cut our way out of it. Let's be frank. We could, you're not going to have a school district. That would decimate the quality of education, bar none. I think you can begin to look at attrition. Maybe I need to substitute that word as folks go. Can we, can't we? But we can't cut our way out of this. This is multiple millions of dollars a year. It's a huge percentage of our budget. And if we believe in the quality that we're offering, those cuts will decimate it. I know I spent more time on that than I said. I apologize.
Thank you, Mr. Cook.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, so that will bring us to item five, which is our superintendent's reports and recommendations. Mr. Richards?
All right, I'm going to pass around some handouts here. Just take one, their paper clip together. So with the Superintendent Advisory Committee, I've been working with them for almost a year now, to work on a facility master plan. And I'm going to stress facility master plan. That doesn't mean it happens all in one fell swoop, right? It's where we eventually want to be. But there's just some very quick drawings, and then there's some cost sheets behind this. So what, where the committee has landed is to build a new high school up on top of the hill. I know in the one drawing, it shows that it's connected. Technically, it can actually be connected to an existing building for OSCC. There's rules against that, at least for the first 12 months or so, after, until after construction. And then on the next page, the thought is that we would build a new elementary school next to the middle school. That would be a comprehensive elementary school, so that would be all kids K through 5. That would basically mean putting Washington, Kraut, and Noble and taking them offline. Now, could we use them for some other purposes if we wanted to? Of course we could. That's a conversation. But then the plan would also be, and there's a list on the next play page of spreadsheets of some of the different costs that go into it. Per OFCC, their suggestion is that we are actually a two-building district. So anything, this would make us be a three-building district. So we pay for the difference between a two-building plan and a three-building plan. That all becomes an LFI. And that was something that the committee thought was really important, to be able to move forward. And then there's also enough LFI's on there, locally funded initiatives, and that's 100% local taxpayer dollars. Some of those we've talked about, some of those we have even talked about during our work session. We included on there auditorium renovations. So there's another possibility that we maybe sit there and go, maybe auditorium renovations go as part of a ballot initiative. So those are all of the lists. What we're going to be doing moving forward is working to gain feedback with our community. We're going to be putting some Zoom meetings up, some in-person town halls, surveys, a variety of ways for people to provide feedback and input as to what they think about the plan. Yet again, you're going to see a cost tag on there. We are not saying that we're doing all of that in one fell swoop. Maybe we do, it's called a segmented project. Maybe we do it as two segments. Maybe we do it as three. Maybe we do it as four. I think we've got to be able to engage our community. I think one of the things I've said since I was first hired is, we have to be able to engage our community and find out what they're willing to support. So I appreciate the work of the Superintendent Advisory Committee. They spend a lot of time, looking at a lot of data. I appreciate it, including Mr. Perez and Mr. Kissbeth, who are the board's representatives on there. They've even done homework. We came up with an idea to try to expedite the process a little bit. We gave everybody on the committee homework for our first meeting, and I was a little bit reticent about how that was going to work. I will say, I think we have some fantastic students out there. Well, we also had some students on the committee, but people did their homework, and people have been paying attention. So I appreciate the work that they've done. So the hope is that we're going to collect some feedback. We will take that feedback to the Superintendent Advisory Committee for them to look at, and maybe we need to change these plans a little bit. Maybe they need to be altered a bit. Maybe we need to prioritize. Maybe we like it, but we really need to talk about how we're segmenting it. I wish I could promise the board right now, here's what it's going to look like, but we want to still keep engaging our entire community now, so that whenever we go on the ballot for a facility issue, the hope is that we've already communicated with the community what their thoughts are and what their preferences are, and obviously what our needs are. And that's going to be part of the presentation that we have as well. TDA is working with us to have a website where we can include all of the OFCC assessments that have been done on our existing buildings, which talk about their replacement versus renovation ratios. That's done by independent parties. That's not just, it's not just somebody here in Tiffin City Schools going, hey, we need a, we need a new elementary for K1. I'm picking on Mrs. Jones, because I hear her in the background there. It's not just us saying that. It's not just our teacher saying, hey, we need a new building. There's metrics. There's data out there that says, here's what should be appropriate for students right now. So I just wanted to be able to answer some high-level questions. I don't want to get into the nuts and bolts of too many financial things. Those were some of the priorities. And yet again, maybe we sit there and go, some of those things on LFI's, maybe that's a wishlist, right? Or maybe that's something that we go, hey, we like that as an idea, but that needs to really be privately raised. That's an LFI that we think our community might support through fundraising. We don't believe that's appropriate to go to the voters for. And all of those are options that are still on the table.
I just want to clarify that. Mr. Kissbeth and I have been on the committee, but it's really the advisory committee doing the work. I think I've taken the position that I'm there to listen, and I think that we want to make it clear that we're letting the community drive this creation of this plan. I wasn't involved in the finance part, or the LFI's, or the facilities thing that you had in terms of sports or extracurriculars. But I think I told, I said, if this is your plan, then this is something we have to, you know, you're telling us this is what you think is the plan for the district. And of course, it's for the board to vet it and then say, what can, can't be done at that point. But, and can you tell the community who comprises that committee, so they don't think it just...
Yeah, we have about 75 people that were on that committee. It's students, it's staff members, it's parents, it's community leaders. Intentionally, we tried to make it that about a third of the people are on a, probably a Tiffin City Schools payroll, but we purposely wanted to make it so that other people, that it was really kind of community-driven. We do need educators on the committee, because they need to be able to talk about educationally what we need and what works well. For example, there's, we're grade-banded right now. There's some merit in grade banding, but we also know from talking to our parents, there's some disadvantages to grade banding. If you have three kids at three different elementaries, pick-up and drop-off time is not an easy thing. We know that. It makes it more difficult to have buy-in with a building when your kids are only there for two years. But there's a lot of wonderful things. To have all the kindergarten teachers all under one roof, so that they can theoretically plan together and collaborate and share materials, there's an efficiency that comes with that. But there's downsides to that as well. So no, it's been a robust group for the Superintendent Advisory Committee, and I was truly impressed with their ability to really work through. And there were some moments where it was heated. People are passionate about the topic of facilities and what that should look like moving forward. But what I've been really impressed by is that it's actually kind of what Mr. Perez said, is that, for the most part, people aren't going in going, this is what I want, and it has to be this, and it can only be this. I would bet, most people on the committee would say, if I had it to do my own way, it probably wouldn't be this. But this is the, kind of the consensus of what everybody was willing to support. I bet you, if you, if anybody ever got Mr. Kissbeth or Mr. Perez one-on-one, they would say that they have some changes and tweaks that they would like to do this, if they got to rule the world and do whatever they wanted. But I think the process has been to try to work to build a consensus that multiple people would be able to support, and that hopefully a majority of our community would support.
And when we started this project, and first of all, I agree with everything you said, Victor, everything. When we started the project, we said, what does the community want? That is what's going to the board. And so that's what we've been working toward. And one other piece I think is very important, because we've spent the first part of the meeting on finances, right now, the state's share of this project is 70%. So if we're looking at an $80 million project, we're going to pay 24 million of that. I think that's a real...
Of a base project.
Not with the LFI's. LFI's are all ours. But on a base project, if it's 80 million, I'm just throwing that number out, 30% of that is 24 million. So that's a pretty good deal for the district. I'm not sure it's going to get any better than that. In fact, it could get worse. And again, I'm not making threats here. I'm just saying what it is. And again, I'm very, I've been very pleased with the consensus building that those 70, 75 people have done. And this is what they've come up with. And notice I said, that's what... And notice I said, that's what they have come up with. This is not Victor Perez and Larry Kissbeth. This is the group that's come up with this.
But interesting watching them, because you could see that they're the ones, you know, if they had a chance, they would, you know, but they're compromising and working together. And I think that's, that's why I have to support whatever comes out of there.
Oh, I hesitate to ask this. You're not gonna be able to answer this question. What did the middle school cost 20 years ago?
Oh, no, the middle school?
Yeah, I...
Yeah, I can't remember.
I hate to ask a question that we don't have the answer to. I apologize for that, but just to...
Mr. Boz, do you know how much the middle school cost?
Okay, but just to give a relative ballpark, right? 15 million, just in case anybody didn't hear. And that's 20 years ago, right? And I think we just finished paying that off. Alright, so with inflation, I mean, that's... Okay. Okay. Okay, so it's not out of line necessarily with what it cost to build something 20 years ago? If you're, if you're even close, right? I'll assume you're close.
Was that your, that was your question?
Yeah, just to get a relative comparison.
So, Mr. Richards, I do wanna thank your committee. I think that it has been a lot of work, and they have done a large lift. I also think the notion of almost having a campus feel, of having all of the, you know, the district pieces here and in this close of a range with each other, I definitely think that that has a lot of appeal to it. And it sounds like you have further steps and next steps of gathering more feedback and coming up with a solidified plan. What's the timeline for that?
So I think the timeline is, for the rest of this calendar year, to work to engage our community, to try to get some feedback. And then at the beginning of the year, come January, February, take that feedback back to the committee and have them analyze it and look at it. Maybe it's easy that we can just make some tweaks and we can do something quickly. It's possible that we might have to do some massive rethinks. So I hesitate to say, but probably for the beginning of the year, we'll take it back to the Superintendent Advisory Committee to take a look at that feedback, to be able to move forward. And, and I don't know what that looks like moving forward, but I do appreciate the work that everybody has put in. And, and I agree, Mr. Kissbeth, and you know, 70-30 split. It's a, that's a pretty nice split that we have with the state. But we also need to make certain that we do it correctly. I think there is a habit of sometimes trying to do things on the cheap. And then you try to lower your costs to bring it down the ask. And I think my philosophy, what I would prefer, and I, I feel pretty safe saying this, because I think it's actually what all five of you would prefer as well, is I'd rather do less of the project, but whatever it is we do, we do it very well so that we can show the community that we can be focused on that and that we can do quality work, than to try to do the whole thing, but, but make it cheaper and, and not get the people what they really are expecting. So I think that'll be a process that we go through. But I very much appreciate the work of the Superintendent Advisory Committee, the work that TDA has done with us in pre-bond services for all of that as well. And I'm looking forward to here in the, probably about a week or so, being able to publish a lot more of this in some really streamlined... I know some of you like some graphics. Oh, we're gonna have some nice graphics and some FAQ places and some, some places where people can go. And actually, all of the documents that have been given at the Superintendent Advisory Committee are all gonna be, able to be put online. Because we also think it's important for people to have trust and transparency about the process that was used as well. They need to see, it wasn't, as Mr. Perez and Mr. Kissbeth said, it's not three people sitting in a room just kind of going, well, we wanna do this. No, there's been a lot of things. In fact, people have put stickers up. We've, it's been very interactive to look at that process.
With your timeline, if we were to take that and like, you know, superimpose that timeline with the, making sure that we are able to lock in the rate from the state with also looking at ballot initiatives, do those all line up?
They can.
And needing to do educational sessions to get the community to be aware?
So I think that they are two separate things, but yet I think we almost have to talk about them together. Our facilities, with the work session that we had, I think was a great example. If our facilities aren't up to date, we keep spending money to put Band-Aids on the problems that will just take, that just takes away funds from enhancing PI. The reality is, most PI funds are meant to continue to enhance the educational offerings and the products and your buildings that you have. The reality is, in Tiffin City Schools, we're using that PI to put Band-Aids on. And, and very honestly, sometimes we can't even fix it with the amount that we have in there. We're truly putting Band-Aids on. Well, that, that does drive an operational cost then as well. It diverts attention, instead of being able to use PI to purchase computers and stuff like that. Then in the past, we've had to take that out of the operating fund, which that's less money that we have for all the other operating initiatives that we need to do for programming for kids and things of that nature. So at some point in time, you have to have both. Very clearly, operating is the most important. I don't wanna ever, you will never hear me say otherwise. But I would also tell you, I think we actually really have to look at both. Trying to do one without the other is, we're kind of, use my grandfather's phrase, we're robbing Peter to pay Paul a little bit. And so we really need to have some consideration. So it's fair that the Superintendent Advisory Committee, and intentionally, we wanted them to look at, what is the master plan for where we wanna be? But once we get that and we've kind of vetted that, now we have to be able to back up and say, now, if we're looking at that as being a combined ballot issue, now what's that look like? Because there's a, there's a threshold, right? To say that we're gonna go to the voters for, you know, whatever millage, there's a point where voters go, that's, that's just not possible. That's not sustainable for us. So we've gotta be able to have that conversation as well.
Superintendent, I don't wanna keep dragging everyone, but I had the fortune to have to do a presentation at Noble this week. And I was lucky to have Mr. Newlove take me around the building, and I hadn't been there for a couple of years. And I couldn't believe how many rooms had been converted for special intervention units and the way the building's been modified and what's been done there. It's really creative, but they don't have more space. And I remember when we planned, at the last time we're talking about facilities and looking at a new building possibility in the LFI's, was, we knew back then that we needed that flexible space for those grades, and we needed it. And now you're starting to see them. And I think we have a bump coming up. Is it the second grade or fourth grade coming through right now?
Second grade.
Second grade. And so it's, it's there. And so I don't know how many more Band-Aids we can do to meet these kids. But at some point, we're using stages, we're using backrooms, we're opening up every space that we can get. And it's not really optimal at some point.
Well, I just look at, we're talking about $300,000 to fix the roof at Washington, which, which we're gonna have to do. We can't wait for a facility issue to do that. We're not gonna have the roof come in on kindergartners and first graders. But that's $300,000 that we could be spending towards other educational and curricular goals and objectives. And that would be, I think, no one likes spending $300,000 on a roof. You don't see that roof. But people would see $300,000 of additional technological improvements, or $300,000 in security improvements. Or, pick away. I'd love to have a conversation where, as a board, it wouldn't be great if we could say, hey, you guys have $300,000 that you weren't counting on. How would you wanna spend that? That'd be a wonderful conversation that, that we don't have. Because we are having to put, literally fix roofs. Fixing boilers when they break down. So I appreciate the work of the Superintendent Advisory. It actually takes us almost directly into the next topic. I know it wouldn't seem like it's related. But when we talk about the district calendar, probably next week, we're gonna be putting out a, an administrative group and a teacher group got-together, which is what the contract says, to be able to look at some different options for our calendar. If we made no changes to our calendar, if we took the same concept and we applied it to next year, our first day with students would be August 14th next year. And I will tell you, and I'm not proud of saying this, as superintendent of the district, I go into the buildings, I'm blessed. It's the best part of my job is getting to go into the buildings. But I can't see, I can't say that the education that the students receive in Tiffin City Schools in August is equal to what other students get in August. Now, right now, this time of year, yeah, I'll put, I'll put our people against most other places. I feel pretty good about the quality of teachers we have and what they do. But it's entirely because of the temperatures in the buildings sometimes. I was at Kraut one day, and I was being a guest reader. I showed up a little bit early. And, and I'm gonna say this, it almost sounds bad, but it was actually very humane. I came in early into the classroom, knocked and came in. The lights were already off, because they're turning off the lights, tried to keep the room just a little bit cooler. All the kids had their heads on the desks. And the teacher was coming around with a spray bottle, just misting down their heads to keep the kids cool. And when I say that with second and third graders, you might think that some kids are going, oh, spray me, spray me. No, they were just kind of looking up at the teacher going, hey, if this is gonna help me out a little bit, that'd be great. We're gonna have to look at moving our start date back a little bit later. Just because we're gonna play the odds in the state of Ohio. As they say, if you don't like the weather in Ohio, stick around, it'll change. But the odds are, in August, we're gonna have warmer days than not. Now, we've had some days, we've even had some days here in October that were a little warm. And apparently, I think Wednesday's supposed to be like up in the 70s again. So, I mean, you never know with Ohio. But we do know in Ohio, in August, it's warm. We did explore the idea of, because I hear this, I probably hear this one from parents more than anything. Can't we just start after Labor Day and end by Memorial Day? That's what we did when we were kids, and we turned out just fine. If we did that, we would be losing 11 instructional days. And in working with the teachers, and I very much appreciate this, we just thought removing over two weeks of instruction for students is really not in their best interest. So that is not gonna be one of the options, even though we did explore it and look at it. So we're gonna be taking three very different calendars and putting them out to the community, and parents, and kids, and staff for feedback on that. And yet again, it may not be any one of those three. Maybe it's gonna be a modification to one of them. But we wanna be able to get feedback as to what are the priorities that people say. One of them has a shortened spring break. Within the group of people that we had in the room, some people liked the shortened spring break. My understanding is that we did have a shorter spring break even just a few years ago. That it was Friday, Monday, or Friday, Friday, Monday? Some people like that. Some people like the fact that we have a five-day spring break now. So we have that on there as well. So we wanna be able to see what is it that people prefer and what is it that they don't like. But it was a great committee. I can't speak highly enough to the people that DEA had on that committee and the work that they did. It was really just, it was phenomenal.
Questions for Mr. Richards at this time? That brings us to item six, which is the opportunity for the public to address the board. Each person addressing the board will give their name and address. If there's several people who wish to speak, it'll be allotted three minutes. Interesting. Seeing none. Right, so for those who didn't, weren't present, there was a strange knocking that came at that moment. Alright, so that will bring us to our consent agenda, which is items 7.1, approve the minutes. Point two, approve the treasurer's report. Point three, approve committee reports. Point four is employee professional staff. Point five is employee support staff. 7.6, which I do wanna pause here, is donations and grants. I started to do just some quick math related to the just beautiful amount of donations that came in, in memory of Scotty Daniel. And I just wanna thank all of those who showed the ways that Scotty touched their life and their world through donating back to the district. So thank you to each of those. We also have a number of other donations and grants that came in from businesses and individuals across the district. So thank you very much to all of them. 7.7 is stipends. And that is where there's a correction, correct? So the only stipend on that is that, that last one, which is that business advisory, reach camp, invention stipend. So, that one's staying. All the others are being taken out. So everything else is removed, so everything above that line. 7.8, statement of purpose of budget reports. 7.9, approve administrative employment. And 7.10, certificate of fiscal officer. We'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda with the correction.
Moved.
Second.
Any discussion or questions?
Okay, just... That's all I'm clear on, 7.7. Everything is omitted except business advisory. Okay.
And I wanted to talk about, thank you, Mr. Kissbeth, for setting me up so beautifully. I did wanna talk about the one stipend that we were leaving. Dr. Gase has the good fortune, I think, of getting to be the chair of our business advisory committee, and I'm Mr. Kissbeth's on it as well. I've only been a part of this district for a little over a year. But listening to a number of people, there's a reason that our Business Advisory Council does such great work. And it is entirely due to the work of one individual, and that is Mrs. Pat Smith. You will not find many administrative assistants who choose to chair a business advisory committee and to do the, the reach and the camp invention and all those things that she does. And that's something that we need to make certain that we're looking at moving forward to. I'm kind of taking my, my script from, from this group, where we've said we need to be able to pay people to, to recognize the work that they do. Mrs. Smith, and I think, I say this almost with a huge smirk on my face, and it can't be seen on video. Mrs. Smith works unbelievable hours. If you come by the district office any day, and I mean any day, you will probably see Mrs. Smith there. She does so much work for our district. I actually brought this up with the Superintendent Advisory Committee, and they're like, you know, that's a, at a stipend of $4,000, that's probably a steal. You know, some places might hire a full-time person to do this. And yet, we have Mrs. Smith. And so we are so blessed to utilize her skill sets. We just had, a week and a half ago, we had our freshmen go to Sentinel for the job fair, the manufacturing job showcase. It was a great event. And who was the one that planned the vast majority of that? Mrs. Smith. And so I, I hope that the board would, would appreciate. I know it's a little risky putting it out there without talking about it, but probably if there's one person in this, in this district that I feel pretty safe in having their work be really supported, I think it would be Mrs. Smith. For those of you that were able to be at opening convocation, Mr. Boz was able to recognize people for longevity of work. And when he announced Mrs. Smith's name, there was a standing ovation. So, and this stipend is not because of longevity for her. It is because of the quality of work that she does, and that that quality of work is valued.
Any further questions or discussion? Mr. Cook.
Yes.
Mr. Williams.
Yes.
Mr. Kissbeth.
Yes.
Dr. Gase?
Yes.
Dr. McBride?
Yes. Brings us on to action items, starting with 8.1. Approve the updated five-year forecast, which this is the piece that Mr. Cook which, this is the piece that Mr. Cook shared background information on earlier in the board meeting. So, entertain a motion to approve.
移到 moved.
Second.
Questions or questions? Everybody feels as though Mr. Cook was able to illuminate some pieces for them? Mr. Cook.
Yes, Mr. Kispeth.
Yes.
Perez.
Yes.
Dr. Gase.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Yes. 8.2, approve real estate purchase agreement. Entertain a motion.
移到
second.
Mr. Richards.
This is for us to be able to purchase. The owner of the house immediately next to the district office and right by the high school has expressed interest in selling. That's, my joke is somewhat that we have a house in our parking lot that everybody drives through, so I think it's a logical property for the district to look to acquire. We worked with the city law director to draw that up, so special thanks to the city law director's office for that assistance, but this would be just to be able to purchase that, that property for the price shown.
Any discussion?
Yes, one question. So, there's been, over the last few years, several discussions about where we could or should or might want to place buildings. And so, purchasing something right here, right, does not conflict with any sense of where we would or not keep any property, right? So, we're not, we're not throwing away money at this, is the point.
No, and I will say, one of the things, there was a lot of talk with the Superintendent Advisory Committee about locations, but the one thing that remained pretty, pretty profound throughout every meeting was that there was a desire to keep a stadium where it is, and we liked, we liked the location that we had for, maybe not for every building, but we liked that, that setting that we have there. So, I think regardless of, even if the Superintendent Advisory Committee were to look at a different location, I don't see us vacating that, that area up on top of the hill, so I think this makes that a really prudent purchase then.
Thank you. Any further questions?
Basically offset by the purchase of the West Junior High, though, in that regard, so.
It ends up being a wash.
It ends up being a wash, and I think, worst-case scenario, it's more additional parking here, so we can, and it's our, we write the house in the middle of ours.
Better yet, nobody else owns it.
Yes.
Correct.
All right, Mr. Cook.
Dr. Gase.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Kispeth.
Yes.
Perez.
Yes.
Dr. McBride.
8.3, approve support staff dental coverage cost change. Entertain a motion.
移到
second.
This is just to put us in line with our rest of our support staff with what we've done with our teachers as well, so this is just making sure that we're doing the same thing with all of our employees.
Any questions or discussion? Mr. Cook.
Dr. Gase.
Yes.
Mr. Williams.
Yes.
Mr. Kispeth.
Yes.
Perez.
Yes.
Dr. McBride.
8.4, approve the Kiefer USA proposal. Entertain a motion.
移到
second.
Oh, this is an almost, yeah, we probably should have changed it again. One of you had some fun with me about that, that we're going to approve the surfacing of the track, but not anything that goes underneath it. So, as we know, we've had an ongoing issue with our track. We have worked through the legal system. It is very disappointing with where we are legally. The company that did the work has, and they're still doing business, but they claim to not have any money now, and there's some ongoing things with that. We go to court with them still on Wednesday to try to get, to collect some more money from them to go towards this track, but the reality is, it's been a problem, and as Mr. Williams alluded to in the work session, we have lanes, I think, two, three, and four, which are basically unusable for us for track purposes. We have brought out experts, they've said that this situation is going to continue to deteriorate. It's not going to magically get better, there is no fix. So, I'm going to talk about 8.4 and 8.5 kind of together. I know the board has to vote separately because they're two different contracts, but the Burn and Jones contract, construction proposal, is to do the base work, that is to rip out all of the asphalt, put down new asphalt that's graded appropriately. We do need to make sure per OHSA that it has a slope greater than 1% and less than 2%. I don't believe, I don't know if our track's within those parameters currently, and it'll allow for proper drainage. So, part of the issue we have on our track, and actually, I think it was the first time I've been at a home game when there was rain, and if you came to the football game on Friday and you looked down at the track, you would actually see puddles on our track. There shouldn't be puddles on a track, and so, water on a track is not a good thing. Standing water is not a good thing. Water is meant to be whipped away from the track. So, there's a lot of, that construction proposal of over $500,000 is a significant chunk. It is a really significant figure. The good part is, we do it once, and we really shouldn't have to revisit that again. The Kiefer USA proposal is for a spray polyurethane coating on top of that track. That's a very, very common track that is put in. Currently, we have a rolled rubber. Most people will tell you that rolled rubber is better than, than the spray polyurethane, but right now, it's an additional $400,000, $500,000 to go with the rolled rubber over a spray polyurethane. And then, when we go back to the conversations that we've had about permanent improvements and operating funds and stuff like that, I think the, the goal is to be able to make sure we get a quality track that we can play on. We are blessed that Mr. Alvarado, our high school principal, also sits on OHSA, so we've had some conversations about eventually returning the regional track meet to Tiffin City Schools. My understanding is that we held it here for a number of years, and it was, it was a great community event as well. So, those are the two proposals. The Kiefer USA proposal is for the spray polyurethane on top of the track, and the Burns and Jones construction proposal is to do all of the base work, just to make sure everybody understands, there's a one-year workmanship warranty and a five-year material warranty on that, and that is standard bonded, and it's bonded.
Explain what that means.
What does bonded mean? Bonded means that basically, we've taken out insurance as part of the cost to say, if anything goes wrong with it, we don't have to engage in, with a mess of attorneys. We have the, an independent bond agency come, take a look at it, and if they find out that we are in fact incorrect, and it's an inferior product, they write us the check, and we go and fix whatever needs to be fixed, and then they haggle with the companies with the attorney fees and all of those, those various entities.
The board's at a vacation. I actually met or spoke to some community members, and there seems to be a misunderstanding. The track and the stadium are Tiffin City School property and facilities. There is a confusion that they belong to the city and the city maintains them, and so, just to clarify, we're responsible for it, and so, we're the ones that are having to fix this, but it is open to others, but we maintain it, so.
Questions or comments, discussion regarding, we'll do first 8.4 and then 8.5.
I can say, we don't have a motion to accept yet, and I'm going to vote to accept it, but I'm going to vote begrudgingly. We do have a motion up for it.
Yeah, to discuss, we had to.
Okay.
Just on the first, not the second.
All right, all right. I'm going to vote for it, but do it begrudgingly because it's not what we paid for originally. We've done our due diligence, we've gone to court, we've won the case, and we're still not getting what we paid for. So, because we need to get the track done, and it's going to be much better than we currently have, I'm going to vote for it, but I think it's a shame that we've done everything correctly and we still don't get what we originally paid for. That's my statement.
We're going to have to pay again.
Yeah, we'll pay again.
It's disappointing and disheartening that an entity would allow the district to be in this position.
Well, actually, we didn't, we didn't pay for the work that's being done, in reality, because had we had the right job done, it wouldn't have been specked out at, at the less expense, because obviously, it needed more work, but we were, you know, we were not advised properly. And so, you know, you think you're getting what's going to work, and frankly, it was, we thought it was a no-brainer because they did Heidelberg's track, right on the, right on the creek bed. I mean, it was very similar situations in a floodplain, and but, so it really had less to do about being the floodplain, it did about just, just the, not having the angles right. Yeah, so.
Mr. Perez.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Kispeth.
Yes, twice.
I'll vote also yes. Thanks.
Dr. Gase.
Yes.
Dr. McBride.
Yes. 8.5, the Burn and Jones construction proposal.
Kelly, did you get that?
No.
There's six votes.
There's six votes.
Mr. Perez. Mr. Williams.
He did.
You want to make sure we got that right? Six yeses.
8.5, entertain a motion to approve.
移到
second.
Same pieces together, any other conversation, discussion, questions? Mr. Cook.
Mr. Kispeth.
Yes.
Mr. Perez.
Yes.
Mr. Williams.
Yes.
Dr. Gase.
Yes.
Dr. McBride.
Yes. And then, this is one of the changes to the agenda. 8.6 has been moved down into board discussion, so that will conclude our actionable items. And now, this brings us to nine, which is board discussion, and this 8.6 is some of those pieces regarding the auditorium renovations. So, we'll have a kind of a summary of what we discussed in our working session and then share some of those pieces. So, Mr. Williams, I'll look at you if you're open to that.
Yeah, I think some, what we discussed was, I guess, a two-week reflection on the board meeting from two Mondays ago. Was that two Mondays ago?
Yes.
Holy cow. All right. And, you know, I think there was, there was two items for consideration at that time, and they, they came somewhere between $2 and $3 million put together, that was the track and the auditorium enhancements, and where that would put us financially if we did the, the lease purchase agreement. And, you know, where we're sitting with our permanent improvement, and we kind of felt, or I felt, right, and I shared that with the board earlier, that that put us in a bad position with that fund. It doesn't leave us enough in that fund to do the rest of the things we need to do, particularly, you know, the auditorium not being in a unusable facility kind of state, which we, we find ourselves in potentially with Washington if we don't repair the roof, right? We have a track that we can't really host events at, so we have unusable facilities. And there were some other interesting things in the auditorium proposal, some energy efficiency things that were kind of bundled together, and it had some implications on how the project could be bid, but it also meant we needed to spend quite a bit more money, and there was a payback for that, right? So, energy efficiency has a payback, so I think it came to roughly $10,000 a year. It was projected over the next 15 to 20 years, and for needing to spend an extra, I think, $500,000 now to save about $10,000 a year, I kind of shared with some people that, that wasn't, that didn't seem to make a lot of sense to me right now, so I, I think where we're at with the auditorium is we're going to look at it again without the efficiency enhancements and get that as the cost, and then go through a bid process, and.
Yeah, we talked about bidding it. We may in fact get some of those items cheaper if we go out on the open market, so to speak. We don't know that as a fact, but it won't have some of those other components.
Right.
And I think one of the important pieces there that we also talked about in the working session is that, that there are going to be things that are priorities, and there's a number of things that are priorities, and unfortunately, with finances, as we've been discussing throughout, that some things, it's going to have to be what is imminent, what is a risk? So, what is either a safety or a health concern, what is not functional or shortly be not functional? So, again, going back to the roof at Washington, if not repaired, we're going to come, we're going to run up to a time where we can't insure the building. Then, we have really disastrous issues facing us. So, while the arts and the auditorium aren't something that we have been able to, or that we have invested in in recent years, it is a priority, and so, I don't want people to walk away and go, oh, they're not doing the auditorium project right now. And so, I think for that, we're going to use some yet speak. We're not doing it yet, but we are looking at some ways to do that, some different funding opportunities, and we're having to do a pretty deep dive of what needs done based off of safety, based off health, based off of being functional, attending to those, and then creating a priority list and getting creative in where some of those funding pieces come from, and some of those are also going to align with, you know, going forward with, with a building plan. So, really, a lot of pieces all kind of dovetailing at the same time. I just don't want, there's a number of needs, and I want to be sure that everybody knows that we're hearing them and we recognize them. There's a number of needs, and there's a limited number of finances.
I think, I think the finance committee did come, would you say consensus, that we don't want to leverage all that amount if it's going to risk us having to go into general revenue? And I think that's our priority out of finance committee, was preserving our general revenue fund because of the five-year forecast, that we have to be mindful of that, and then I think that the public has to understand, that's one of the opportunities, I think, that we can leverage to try to get public assistance on that, or, you know, a buy-in on that, donations, or something creative on that. But in speaking to Mr. Richards, we did try to take apart the project lights, sound, but I think as I explained at the last one, if we do the electrical work, we're going to have to probably do everything. It's just like your house, you open that wall, and, you know, and it's, you don't know what you're going to find in there, so. And I think that's one of the things, is if we're going to do it, we're going to do it right, but we're also going to try to budget for it.
We have newfound wrinkles with there being some, some changes with legislation and when we'll be getting payouts, so it's, it is, it is always our, our duty to be fiscally sound with voter dollars and with the district, and so, it is disappointing that we can't do it just yet, but it doesn't mean that it's not going to be done. Any other thoughts?
So, but what we're saying is, we can't correct lighting on the stage without looking at the electricity in the entire facility.
And one of the pieces they said is, once we get in there, then there's an asbestos piece that we then, so basically, it's, you can't piecemeal it. It all has to be attended to. Right.
Well, I agree that we could use new seats, but seats aren't electrical.
And, and that was the, I think, when I talked to Mr. Richards, Mr. Cook, I believe I talked to them a few days after that meeting, and that was one of the first questions I asked, right? It was, for the auditorium renovations, why are we replacing lights in the bus garage? Right? It felt like there was a scope issue there, right? And, you know, it was to, to get some of those energy improvements, but also, it, it helped us get through that bidding process too, and it had to include those things. So, it's more of a lighting project that includes auditorium enhancements.
That's fair.
As opposed to the auditorium enhancements and the, also, we're doing these other things. So, you had to kind of change the way you looked at the project overall. It was a lighting and energy project plus some auditorium enhancements, and I think we need to look at those things. Is that what we're setting out to do, or do we want to focus on the auditorium projects and really get, get some focus on how do we want to fund the auditorium project, right? Because we, we want to do those things, right? We've had discussions about the, the quality and the comfort of the seats, right, and the, the sound and the lighting, and just the overall atmosphere of the, of the auditorium, right? And, and we want to look at that as a project that we can control and manage independent of other factors, right? It's an extra half million dollars, right? It's a lot of extra money.
Any other pieces related to this or other board discussion?
For board discussion, I just want to say, good luck to the girls' cross-country team at the regional Saturday. They're a little secret here in Tiffin. Boys, by the way, are just as successful, but the girls, so people understand, between the NOL and their current conference, were champions in '82, '83, '84, '89, '88, '90, '91, '92, '93, '94, '95, '98, 2000, 2002, 2004, 2008, 2018, till this year. So, they did the six-peat this year, but they had an eight before, and we have some of those successful programs, people don't understand. Congratulations to the boys' middle school cross-country team, they took second in Dublin, and everyone, there's a game Friday. Girls' middle school cheer also took third at, I believe, Mohawk at some competitions, so good luck to all our athletes that are continuing. Congratulations to volleyball and their season, so.
Been a very successful fall for athletes.
Any other pieces for board discussion? I appreciate each of you, and that you are all, we're all now coming in earlier to do the working session and then the board sessions. We do not have a need for executive session this evening, so that'll bring us to adjournment. With our next regular board meeting being November 27th at 6:30 with the working session to happen just prior to that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
移到
Mr. Cook.
Yes.
Perez.
Yes.
Dr. Gase.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Thank you all. Please enjoy the rest of your evening, and we'll see you again in a month.